Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey and Dr. Casey, happy birthday again to you. Okay, let's begin with our COVID update. I think that you're going to see a theme that is much what Mr. Contra was talking about a little bit earlier. And we were having this conversation a couple of months ago, the theme will be very different. So I'm very, very thankful of the progression that we've taken as we have great partners that you will get a chance to hear from in just a little bit. So today, again, I have my amigos with me. We're going to be talking about a general COVID update as well as the Chesterfield Health District update, but with Dr. Samuel. Followed by him will be, again, our very own Chief Senator will come back and give us the county government update as it relates to COVID. And then we've added a fourth wheel on to this vehicle this week. We're going to have Mr. Dan Cohen come from Community Enhancement to talk a little bit about Emergency Rental Assistance Program as it relates to COVID as well. So moving into a thing of back to positive feedback, I have three great pieces of information that I want to share with you from our citizens, and they're very brief. Number one, Kathy goes on to say, "You get A plus for every aspect of the first Pfizer vaccine shot. The sign up with VDH was very easy, the registration and confirmation was perfect, the traffic management was excellent, and the shot process was outstanding. Overall, was extremely well organized. I can't think of anything you could have done to make it better." Thank you, and thank you, Kathy. Steve goes on to say, "Got my first dose of vaccination this afternoon, and everything went like clockwork. Did not have to wait at any stations. Got signed up for a second dose appointment, plenty of people showing up. Where you go next, to show you where you go next. Good job." Thank you, Steve. And lastly, Lori goes on to tell us, "Thank you very much for making it so easy for Chesterfield County residents to receive COVID vaccines. The entire process was so well organized and thought through at every step of the way. Each location had a professional and pleasant person to get you to know, get you to, get you to what you need to do next. I applaud and thank Chesterfield County. That is a great place to live," which is a great place to live. Thank you, Lori. We appreciate these comments. And as you can see, I'd be remiss if I didn't notate one of our employees, Ms. Holly Angel from the Parks and Recreation Department. If you to know Holly is to love Holly, and I always say, everybody needs a Holly in their life, and she would probably kill me for saying that, but that's how much I respect Ms. Holly and Parks and Recreation. Moving on, our very own Chairman Holland with some of the Chesterfield Health District staff, a previous encounter. General updates, as you know, we're in currently in Phase Two. Virginia's in Phase Two vaccination. At this point, eligibility open to everyone aged 16 and over. Anyone with pre-registered, that had pre-registered with Phase One could go on to be, to receive a vaccination appointment. And according to the Governor's Office, everyone that wants one should be able to receive one by April the 30th. Everyone should also continue to visit the vaccinate.virginia.gov or call the 1-877-VAX in Virginia to get vaccinated. And I will also give you another point of entry in just a little bit of where you can also go to receive a vaccination potentially. Looking at some of the other updates, there have been some restrictions that have been relaxed. According to the fifth amended executive order 72 effective this past April 21st, seating is now permitted at bar areas and restaurants provided at least six feet is still maintained, but no standing to congregate at that point. Outdoor races and marathons may place runners in staggered groups of up to 100, which is up 50 from, up from 50 in the past. Stu theatrical and musical performances may allow patrons up to 30% of the venue capacity, which is a minimum of 500 patrons indoors and no specific limits on outdoors. Distancing requirement have been decreased from 10 feet to six feet at our public amusement venues. Also, personal care and personal grooming studios are no longer required to maintain appointment logs, which is a difference from the past. And Mr. Holland, this one is especially for you because I know you like to sing. Karaoke is no longer prohibited, so you may do that now. Splash pads, hot tubs, and saunas are no longer prohibited. And if you like to play your brass instruments, you don't have, you can remove your mask going forward to do that as well. Looking forward and where we go with the sixth amended executive order 72 effective coming up May 15th, you can do some of these things. Capacity limits at entertainment venues will increase from 30% to 50% with an increase in the maximum number of indoor patrons from 500 to 1,000. That is certainly good news. No specific limit on number of outdoor patrons. Capacity limits at recreation sport venues will increase from 30% to 50% with maximum of 250 spectators per field for indoor events and 1,000 spectators per field for outdoor events. I know that Parks and Recreation and our other venues around town are certainly happy to hear that with all the tournaments going on. The limit on social gatherings will increase from 50 to 100 indoors and 100 to 250 in outdoors. Some updates available in terms of resources for our community. We've mentioned these before, but these are just some highlights to remind the community that if you still need assistance, check out your local library. The library is professional, staying ready to assist you if you need access to internet or access or knowledge to learn how to get on the Vaccinate Virginia website and of course vaccinate.finder, which we'll mention a little bit later as well. Secondly, if you need a ride to a, to receive a vaccine at a local pharmacy or doctor's appointment or what have you, you can call, if you need assistance, Access On Demand. $6 trip will be covered if you're eligible and call Access On Demand to find out what the eligibility criteria is for those that are not eligible. They will still be able to assist you with, with the G T, with the GRTC program funding as well from the CARES Act funding. At this time, and we're going to ask Dave to play just a very 30-second commercial for us, which our Communication and Media Department has worked so hard to produce as we navigate how to reach the population of 18 to 54.
Why get the COVID-19 vaccine? Studies show that getting the vaccine is effective and protects us from severe complications associated with the virus. Ending the pandemic depends on most of us getting vaccinated. This is our community. Together, we need to take the necessary actions to help protect ourselves and those around us. Get vaccinated today. Visit Chesterfield County's website for a list of places you can register for the vaccine and learn how to protect you and your loved ones. Visit Chesterfield.gov/covid.
Thank you, Dave. Very quick commercial, thanks to our Communication and Media Department and partners. Our advertising campaign is from Wednesday, April 21st, going through Sunday, June 20th. And again, the target audience is for ages 18 to 54 with this particular campaign. This is also in English and Spanish. You may see this on some of your television sites as we target it for certain populations on BET, CNN, Comedy Channel, WWE, ESPN, A&E, and Food Network. And in this, on the Spanish, when we are streaming it, you may also see it on Telemundo, also Spanish version of CNN and ESPN as well. Also, in producing these ads, we produced 30,000 flyers, English and in Spanish, and delivered them to the food bank to be able to deliver to the individuals that are coming to the food bank to get the information out. These flyers were important, why? The flyers debunk the vaccine myths and points people to Chesterfield's COVID-19 webpages, which is a great resource. This is just a reminder from the video to visit Chesterfield.gov/covid for all your needs as it pertains to how you can get a vaccination appointment. That being said, as of 12:30 today, a video news release was sent out from our Communications and Media Department regarding Chesterfield Health District encouraging residents to use vaccinefinder.org to find COVID-19 vaccine appointments here in our area. Thanks to Dr. Samuel for also making this announcement available on the YouTube channel as well. And I'm certainly, Dr. Samuel might mention that as, again, in his report, and I hope I didn't steal your thunder, sir. By way of thank yous, we certainly know that we can't do this one thing without so many that have come to the table to help. And these pictures are just a sample of all the great folks that make this happen, so we do say thank you. But do want to recognize and thank the community, the Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, Fire EMS, Human Resources, Employee Medical Center, IST, Sheriff's Office, Parks and Recreation, VDH, Chesterfield Health District, Forest View Rescue Squad, all the county employees that came to support or volunteer at the Fairgrounds Pod sites over the last few months. And certainly, we also thank Communication and Media to help us spread the word about these great things I've just spoken about. Changing it just a little bit, going back to put on a Parks and Recreation hat for just a second, I'm just going to plant that for just a second, as this is still COVID-related. Last year, the Parks and Recreation Department weren't able to have many of their camps. So on behalf of the Parks Recreation Department and the Director, Mr. Bob Smet, I would like to give you this update, offering this, this summer off, Parks and Recreation will offer more than 50 summer camp programs to give you a sample. Outdoor adventure camps, nature, history, community recreation, therapeutic recreation. For those that are not familiar with therapeutic recreation, those are programs that are designed for individuals with disabilities that may need some additional assistance. However, if individuals would like to participate in what we call, some people may call mainstream programs, but those individuals also have disabilities, it, Parks and Recreation would like you to know that inclusion services are also offered at, for your assistance. Science programs, education and sports-related camps are also available, virtual and in-person program. And they want you to know that these camps will be COVID-friendly with precautions taken. Camp registration opened this past April the 19th. And for more information, the number and the website is listed there for our viewing audience. Lastly, I just want to briefly mention that the county reopening task force has started the process of studying how best to open back up county and bringing our employees back in a safe manner, whether it's a phased approach or otherwise. Stay tuned, more information will be coming at a later date. At this time, I would like to transition over to my colleague, Dr. Alex Samuel.
Thank you, Dr. Worsley, Mr. Holland, members of the Board of Supervisors. So I'm here to provide a brief update on vaccine supply and distribution planning. We've come a long way from where we were a few short months ago, and I'm honored to be part of an incredible team, some of whom you've already heard about and have been highlighted this afternoon already. So this slide describes the flow of vaccine into the health district through the various established channels of distribution. I'm highlighting the past two weeks because this captures our current weekly pattern pretty well. The first point I want to make is that we've received, we've been receiving many more weekly doses now, around 17,000 total first and second doses compared to the 4,500 doses a week we were managing a few short months ago. Moving forward through the end of May, we'll be directing more of the doses coming to the Health Department, which is labeled as CHD on this slide, to the Community Vaccination Center at VSU. Our pharmacies are also projected to receive an allocation totaling around 21,000 doses this week, mostly through the federal retail pharmacy program. We receive confirmation of weekly doses received by pharmacies on Saturdays, so we'll know for sure on Saturday how many they receive through that program. So my second point is to indicate that we're expecting to have ample supply to meet demand as well as enough supply to reach our goals through the various vaccine channels. So this district entered Phase Two on April 12th, making anyone 16 years old and older eligible to receive a vaccine. This was one week ahead of the state mandated deadline of shifting to Phase Two on April 19th. Having much more ready supply and many more distribution channels through pharmacies and medical practices, plus the availability of the Community Vaccination Center at VSU through the end of May, we are now poised to focus our attention much more intently on our vulnerable and underserved populations. I'll speak more about that in a moment. But I do want to highlight another important milestone, which is that now we're at a point where vaccine supply and access points are sufficient to move away from pre-registration, allowing folks interested in getting a vaccine to self-schedule an appointment at a time and location convenient for them. So the main access point is vaccinefinder.org where appointments can be made at medical practices and pharmacies that are offering vaccine. And I'm pleased to announce that as of today, appointments at the Community Vaccination Center at VSU, which will be our principal large vaccination site through the end of May, are accessible through vaccinefinder.org. As Dr. Worsley alluded to, I've been working with county media to share the news about this access to self-scheduling, which will be coming out today as a media release. So as I mentioned earlier, much of our work as a health department will now be directed at vaccination efforts aimed at vulnerable populations. We learned a lot through our community testing efforts last summer and autumn, and will be establishing vaccination sites in parts of the health district where we know access to vaccine will be a challenge. I've listed clinic sites at the bottom of this slide that we've already secured for use in May, and community outreach efforts have already begun. We've been providing vaccines weekly at the Children's Home of Virginia Baptist since late February, and we're also exploring the use of mobile clinics as well. So that was a general overview of our strategy. However, however, there will continue to be factors that we'll need to monitor that will influence our tactics. These are a few that come to mind. Nationwide and statewide, there have been indications of decreasing demand. We're already sensing that as we've been monitoring vaccine appointment fill rates at the Fairground Pod as well as information we're receiving about the CVC site at VSU. We're also able to monitor demand for vaccine through our partner medical providers through direct communication and through ordering information available through the state vaccine ordering system. We'll also, we'll be able to monitor the success of our outreach efforts aimed at vulnerable populations through communication with our faith-based organizations' point of contact who have been recruited to help interface with these target populations. In addition to this, flyers and other distribution material will have easy-to-use QR codes printed on them to facilitate appointment registration, which staff can monitor to ascertain vaccine interest. We're constantly monitoring vaccine supply, but again, all indications are that supply is increasing at a healthy rate. In fact, as I've alluded to, alluded to earlier, it looks like supply is now exceeding demand. As we hear back from our outreach teams and monitor appointment fill rates at clinics aimed specifically at vulnerable populations, we can ascertain the need for pop-up or mobile vaccination clinic deployment in other parts of the district to provide more direct vaccine access to vulnerable, vulnerable groups. And finally, as we monitor demand, we understand the need to be flexible with regard to how those interested in receiving a vaccine can, can access one. I mentioned the shift at the VSU Community Vaccination Center to self-appointments through vaccinefinder.org. We'll be including walk-up registration access at our vulnerable population clinics, and we're continuing to work on ways to make access as easy as possible moving forward. In closing, I believe we're now at a point where our general flight path can be established, and we can say with some confidence that this is the direction we'll be taking for the next stage of our response. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments, board members? Mr. Engel.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, I'd like to say how far we have come in such a short time. I know several months ago, it was a tougher audience with us, and we all had some concerns, which you shared with us, but you were willing to appear before us and always answer our questions. And I just want to thank you for the way you've handled this and some of the things that came your way early that weren't necessarily very kind to you as people responded to the rollout, but how great of a job you've done since then and how much you have proven yourself as a leader in helping us, as I heard you state earlier, which we brought up early in this, as a team member and your significant role on the team. So thank you for all that you've done.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Engel, and really, it, it has been a fantastic collaboration. We could not have done it without the support of, of county assets and resources.
Thank you, sir. Other than the comments, Chief Senator, are you coming, any other comments? I understand you make a presentation as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, just a couple of quick updates, if you'll advance to the next slide, please. I thought for this slide, I'd just sort of aggregate all of the effort that's been ongoing since the first vaccinations became available, the first vaccines became available to the county back in December, December 23rd is when we first received vaccines here. So just to aggregate all of this, and this includes first and second doses from Moderna and Pfizer and also the single doses of J&amp;J. Through that time, the collective efforts of Chesterfield County Government as well as the Health District at the Employee Medical Center level, 1,370 doses have been administered. Chesterfield County Public Schools have administered 11,459 doses. Chesterfield Fire EMS through its pod at the Public Safety Training Center administered 12,948 doses. That includes 7,000 doses that were administered to 1A and 1B populations in our community. Many of our businesses that have essential employees that qualified for the vaccines at the time chose to get their vaccines here with our PSTC pod. They also embarked on bid-bound residents, taking care of their needs in the home. So far, they have administered 271 doses, and they have further doses scheduled in the coming weeks. Now, we've closed the PSTC pod, and we have reassigned many of those firefighters back to the field to the normal station assignments, but our MIH program is still geared up to provide that homebound assistance as it becomes available. And certainly, Mr. Winslow, I appreciate the referrals that you have given us from some of your constituents, and I'm glad we were able to take care of those in need in the community.
If I may, just interrupt for a moment, Chief. I mean, I appreciate you because without MIH going directly to some of these folks, I had a lady who had surgery, she couldn't go anywhere. She's stuck inside her house. I had another lady with, you know, a disease that is, you know, that's going to be terminal, and she, you know, she had nowhere to go either. So I, I so appreciate this program, and MIH just continues to knock it out of the park. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Health District level, between the Fairgrounds Pods and some of the other community-based pods that Dr. Samuel mentioned a moment ago, 31,652 doses have been administered. So altogether, the county government and Health District combined, 60,000 doses of vaccine have been administered in our community. So that's great news. Next slide, please. One of the game changers in this whole event has been the Mass Vaccination Center at, at VSU. And early in the vaccination effort, we got word that VDEM was scouting locations for a possible vaccination site south of the James River. And Jess Robinson and her staff worked and engaged with VDEM, Virginia Department of Emergency Management, to encourage them to consider Chesterfield County for one of those sites. Our IMT scouted out several locations, and certainly, the Convocation Center at VSU was a perfect site for that. Thanks to the support of Virginia State University, their willingness to allow the site to be set up there. This is a site that's funded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, it's administered by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and operated by a contractor, Ashbrit IEM Health. And it began operating March 17th of 2021. So far, they have administered 82,484 doses. That's as of the beginning of this week. That's on average 13,556 doses per week. While we don't have any official numbers, we've been asking, you know, how many of those doses are going to Chesterfield residents versus other areas that are covered by the Vaccination Center? We do believe, based on some anecdotal information, that probably 80% of these doses are going to Chesterfield residents. So again, another, another good call trying to get that site here in the county. At this point, the operation is extended to the end of May, and there is some discussion about potential, you know, several-week extension beyond that. Next slide. Today, we've rolled out the latest version of our Road to Community Vaccination Goal Dashboard. And as you can see, we are within 70.4% of achieving our newly revised goal, which includes 16 and above. So the, the framework for this new dashboard has basically taken into consideration the demographics from 15 years of age and above that are available to us as well as the similar demographic information to other localities to do the comparison. As it was mentioned earlier before, we were kind of leading the, the race on first doses. And I think a reason that we've fallen behind here as of late is that the CVC at VSU, the Community Vaccination Center, has transitioned over the past few weeks to doing second doses. And so we're going to watch in the next couple of weeks to see if that picks back up. But again, we've got to get more people coming to get their, their vaccinations, obviously, to keep that number going. But second doses, we're, we're doing very well, and so we're very happy with that. Dr. Casey?
Chief Senator, this actually is a good point to just pause for a second. With that chart you saw, what we're trying to do is be transparent to our citizens because as they've opened up the window of ages, we didn't want to neglect that fact. So, and then Chesterfield, as you can see, moved down a notch or two in the rankings. That's only because we probably have one of the largest concentration of young people amongst those other peer localities. So, but having said that, that is a transparent slide, that's exactly where we are. We hope that our youth that are now availed to be getting a shot will, will be doing so at the same rates that the older folks have been doing. More importantly, though, and as we've said from the very start, I think 93% of our deaths in Chesterfield County, and it's really held up almost since last March, quite frankly, have been over the age of 60. And, and one thing that is excellent in our community vaccination goals, the 60 to 70, 70 to 80, and, and above 80, they are all actually at our community vaccination goals, which I simply refer to as sort of a herd immunity. So we're doing some other analyses now too further that is, is our death rate going down? I mean, that's, that's what's caused this pandemic scare is the death of innocent people, people getting sick and getting better. You know, there are so many viruses and illnesses that, that don't shut down societies over it, the death is what scared people. So we're going to try and do even deeper dives into the data to try and illustrate to ourselves, to you, to the public, to state officials, that this death rate actually, with again, the over 60 population, which was the initial focus, as you remember, the over 65, I think, is what that initial bracket was. But, you know, again, I think we like to say virtually everybody who's wanted a shot over the age of 60 has been availed a shot. Now, we may need to do some a little bit more target, but credit and kudos to, to that sector because they have achieved the greater than 75% in essence vaccination goal.
Well put, thank you. So I'd encourage you to go to the, the website, take a look at the dashboard, take it for a drive, and again, we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Excellent, that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments, board members, please, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just again, I'd like to thank you and your team for all that you've done, for your efforts as part of the larger team as well. You said we're doing really well on the second vaccine. At this point in time, fully vaccinated residents of Chesterfield County are actually number one in the state for populations over 200,000. We've been there consistently for some period of time, and hopefully, we will continue to see that we stay in that area. I did have a question that I didn't ask Dr. Samuel that I don't know if you can answer or not, but do you know if the doses that are administered through the federal programs are now being registered by the state so that we know if we're really at this number or if we may be as much as 5 or 10% higher than this number because we don't have a way to capture that information?
Have to turn that one over to Dr. Samuel.
And I think he left.
Well, I can just interject briefly on that, and I, and I think we did do an analysis a week or so ago, and that's actually held up from the start too, that there is about 3% to 5% of the population of Virginia that is not recorded by locality that has received a shot. How much of that has been through the federal programs or through some other state-administered programs? I don't have that answer, or, or I don't have the specific to know what's the under-reporting for Chesterfield. So even what you saw on the dashboards, you could probably add 3% to 5% at any point in time and, and get a comfort for what is occurring. But I see, I see Jess Robinson here, so she may be the best one to do that. So I stalled for long enough for you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Engel, I think I might be able to answer that question for you. The federal partnership program is merely the inject of where the vaccines are coming from. So where our federal partners are providing the vaccines to these pharmacies, the vaccines still have to be registered in the VIIS system, which is the Virginia Immunization and Information System. And that's where the dashboard derives its data from. So while we don't know where maybe someone got their vaccine, we do know that they have been maybe someone got their vaccine, we do know that they have been vaccinated. But to Dr. Casey's point, some folks, at the beginning, actually, really, the only required pieces of information are name and birth date, and not necessarily address or locality. So some people probably were missed with that locality or their home address, which accounts for not being able to be mapped or what have you. Does that answer?
It does for the majority of my question, but, and I may not have asked this, the federal-administered doses such as Fort Lee, Maguire Veterans Hospital, DLA, are those also put into the state system?
Yes, sir. Anyone who receives a vaccine, any Virginia resident that receives a vaccine will be put into viz. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jess. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Care.
I didn't get a chance to say it earlier, which I should have, but thank you to your staff for all the hard work last year and all the hard work this year, and everything that they've done to help us with the vaccination process. They've really stepped up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your leadership, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Dr. Worsley, Chief Center, and of course, Dr. Samuel, we appreciate your being here and updating us. This is good news, and it really points to your leadership and execution. And thank you, Dr. Casey, as well, for your leadership as we attempted to coordinate with the state and make a difference. Thank you so much.
And I'll turn it over to Dan Cohen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd. Chairman Holland, members of the board, Dr. Casey. I want to thank Dr. Worsley there for calling me a fourth wheel. I've never been called that before in my entire life. But I've actually brought a fifth wheel with me as well. Nick Feit is actually going to do the second slide in the presentation today, because I want to introduce you to him. Nick started in July. This is part of his onboarding experience. He is one of the county's housing and real estate coordinators, and actually is managing the program, and he'll get into some of the details. Can you hit that slide for me, please? Thanks. Lord knows, I can't read that. I just wanted to introduce you to a couple of the partners, actually, that are involved in the program that we're calling, you know, ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, because it actually had a precursor to that, as a matter of fact. We, through the efforts of the board and Dr. Casey, you took $550,000 from our original CARES Act money and put it towards rental assistance in 2020. That money went to an organization called ACTS, which is Area Congregations Together in Service. It was begun in 2003 among five churches, has expanded actually 50 interfaith organizations, as well as corporate and nonprofit partners as well. Their original aim was actually to help homeless people, especially families with children. And now they've morphed into a much larger organization that stepped up to the plate, initially to help the state actually with providing rental assistance. So when you made that award of that money, we actually entered into a contract with ACTS, as a matter of fact, to continue to provide the service. And what that initial funding actually did was give us a person at the organization who is just responsible for Chesterfield County alone, as a matter of fact. Subsequent to that, we received a tranche of $10.5 million, as a matter of fact, from the Department of Treasury to provide an emergency rental assistance program. We are one of only two counties in the entire state, by the way, Fairfax County being the only other county, to actually run and operate our own particular program. And one of the reasons why, and again, I'm very pleased that you allowed us to do this, is because we already had this prior relationship with this organization and felt very comfortable to be able to obligate the funds to do that. And Nick will give you some data and some statistics. I think the program is working very effectively, and I want to tell you that it not only helps tenants, it also helps, remember, it also helps the landlords as well with getting back rent. So we're really helping folks on both ends of that particular spectrum, you know, to do that. When we accepted that $10.5 million, it also allowed us to use some of that money for homeless services as well. So we have a contract with Homeward, and I know Dr. Casey knows Homeward well. They're one of the regional organizations responsible for coordinating homeless provision of services, and they do point-of-count surveys amongst other things. And so they're providing three programs for us that Nick will get into as well. The last thing I'd like to say is that accepting that $10.5 million actually is going to allow us, hopefully, to accept another $8.3 million, which are coming down the pike very soon. They will have similar types of restrictions, as a matter of fact, but it's going to come probably in different increments. Like, we got that $10.5 million in one lump sum to the Treasury. We're probably going to get 40% and 40% this particular time period. And I believe Treasury, you know, they're writing the rules and regulations as they're rolling out the money. If we are left up, if there's some leftover funds, rather, we will likely be able to use 20% of that $8.3 million to actually the provision of some permanently affordable housing or something like that, perhaps repurposing of a school or something like that, or some other project that we are involved in with a nonprofit organization. So I'd like to, again, say thank you very much for trusting us and allowing us to go on this particular path. So I'd like to turn it over to Nick Feit for the next slide. Next slide, please. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I just want to say I am extremely grateful for all those that helped get me vaccinated. I was so eager to get vaccinated, I actually showed up two days before my appointment, not looking at my calendar. But I have two small kids at home, and so it was a relief to get vaccinated. As Dan said, we ran a program in the fall, roughly September to December, and distributing money, we had the infrastructure in place to accept this other award of funds that came out from the federal government in December. We have awarded approximately $5 million of that funds to ACTS, and they have distributed a little bit more than $3 million to date. So to get you some specifics of what that looks like, it sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, it goes fast and it goes quick, even though the average award is around $4,000 or so, so maybe three months. You multiply that by the roughly 1,300 people we've provided funding for, and it's distributed pretty quick. This program lets us pay rental arrears, so that enables people to possibly avoid being evicted by having their rent completely covered and not lead to them being in a hole when the eviction moratorium is lifted. There is no one geography that has seen a majority of recipients of funding. You know, the Bensley neighborhood has, that zip code, that's how the data is reported, has had 26% of our recipients to date. But the pandemic has affected people all across the county, and maybe before this, you were above 80% AMI, but this program lets us look at your monthly income to determine if you're eligible. So in many ways, we are using this funds to, as Dan said, keep landlords from going into foreclosure. We have a large mix of landlords. There are, yes, there are apartment complexes where the landlords have used property managers to help people qualify, and in that case, people are able to get assistance, and, you know, less than an hour, they're able to be paid off and straight to people that are just renting a house here or there. So, you know, I think the maximum award we've had has been about $18,000 for a person that had been out of work for a long time. But, yeah, to date, we're, it's going well. The next round of funding, as Dan says, is going to be the same money, but with slightly different rules and field goals and lines to cross. But I'm looking forward to that, and I think it's a good opportunity for the county to do something with penny funding that if we don't need to help people, remains. With regards to the programs, you can barely see at the very bottom of this slide, we are also providing, and one of the key benefits of receiving this money versus allowing the state to have it, is that we were able to target funds to prevent and mitigate homelessness. And I think there's three ways to think about what we're funding. One is the regional homeless shelter. So those are people already in a shelter, and with COVID, we've needed both more beds and more spaces. And homeless shelters are still pretty much at capacity in the region. So if you are experiencing homelessness, you may call, and it may be a little bit of a wait to find a bed for you. So some funding will help both staff that, keep it safe, keep it clean. And then we have housing stabilization, which is to try to take people who just need, you know, a small amount of money, maybe it's a couple thousand dollars, and some coaching, to get out of a shelter and into more stable housing. And at that point, we can transition them to the rental assistance program. And then this last pool of money, and they're all kind of named the same thing, flexible homeless money, but it's to try to keep people from getting into a homeless shelter to begin with. And I've worked pretty closely with staff in the Department of Social Services, and this amount of funding, just flexible money, say $3,000 or something like that, can prevent a whole family from going into homelessness. So I think, long-term, we'll have some, you know, clear data on what works and what works well for this one as all over. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, comments, board members?
Mr. Chairman, that was just my only question, was you're tracking results as you go for each case, and so there'll be some really good information, I presume, at the end of this. So I'm looking forward to that report and what works. Like I say, what doesn't? Where should we invest further and perhaps shift things around if we need to? That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.